Good afternoon or evening, we're going to call today's meeting to order. Today's March 5th, 2024. This meeting is being audio and video recorded for future cable broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. We'll start with the Fledge of Allegiance, so please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes payroll warrants, which is included in our consent agenda. So if I could have a motion, please to accept those items that are in the consent agenda. That includes the minutes from February 6th meeting.
So moved.
Sorry.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have, we're moving into delegation this evening. And so we do have one person signed up, so I'd like to invite Shelby Hamilton to the podium for, to make comment.
Hi there again, my name is Shelby Hamilton. I live at Two Manor Drive in Fairhaven. I spoke last school committee meeting about the proposed calendar. So I looked at the agenda that was up there today, and it does say revised school calendar, so I'm not sure if any changes had been made. But I did write down some comments that you guys had a nice discussion of from the last meeting. But I just wanted to, you know, give my little two cents on for what it's worth. So I know Dr. Bailey had talked about the transportation, the budget issue, that if we did start the, if we started normally, there was a risk of going past when Fairhaven gets out. And that a cushion at schools would have to have buses going longer, and that would be a pretty big, pretty big for our budget. But I just wanted to point out that if we do start the two days earlier, then we would guarantee have to pay for those two days of extra buses. Because Fairhaven, I believe, they don't, they haven't come out with their calendar yet. But I believe that they are starting the week we normally start and taking those first two days. So they wouldn't have any kids those first two days, and we would. So that would be a guarantee for us to have to run buses for two days. I also liked the discussion we had about the gradual start for students. It's also a nice start for staff as well. I know in the elementary school, where with the kids, you know, all day long. So those three days that we have with them, if we start normally, it's just a nice three days of getting to know you, going over rules of the classroom. And then when we start the following week, that's when we can get into academics. I feel like five days in the beginning with the kids is kind of like a burnout for them. It's kind of a burnout for teachers. It's just a lot all at once. So a nice gradual release in the beginning of the year is always kind of an easy way to get into the school year. There was a big discussion about the voting happening at school and schools having to, the students not being able to come for those days. Today was a perfect example, the students didn't come, but those days we still have professional development. So it's not like a waste of a day when the students not here. We still have our professional development, we get to meet as a staff and, you know, talk about issues. So you guys can decide about, you know, the whole voting thing, I know that was a big discussion. But in terms of the calendar, I feel like that's not a big issue because we still have professional development days anyway that we have to fit in. So those are just nice days that we can do it. In terms of temperature at the beginning of the year, it is super hot. The seasons, I feel like, have shifted lately, and it's been cooler in the June month than the August, September. Just this year, the, some of the classrooms in the elementary school had to have like cooldown periods where we had to go into a different room because our classrooms were just so hot. So I'm just afraid starting, I know it seems silly just two days earlier, but it's still like super hot in the beginning of the school year. And then just, I know the Accusative Teachers Association does not have any say in the calendar besides open house and parent teacher conferences. But we did send out a little survey to the staff, and 91 people filled out the survey. And out of those 91, 88 had wanted the school calendar to remain the same as what it used to be. And only three people had said that they wanted to start the two days early. So majority of the staff wanted the schedule to stay the same. So those are just a few points I wanted to point out. Again, I know it says revised school calendar, so I'm not sure if anything has changed with the proposal. But I'm looking forward to hearing your discussions on what's going to happen for next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. And we're going to move right into that item.
Yep, full business.
I will hand that over to Dr. Bailey to take us into this.
So as we talked about, there were two scenarios last time. It was the two days before, prior to the 26th and the 26th. I, as the superintendent, have to do my due diligence to let the committee know of any budgetary concerns. We talked about Juneteenth, we talked about, you know, all kinds of different scenarios. So I did meet with Patrick McIntyre, our business manager. We did review the numbers because this school year, we have AES staff will be here after Juneteenth. So we, we looked at the funding for that, and we do feel as though we can handle it should we get snow days. So again, doing my due diligence to let you know where we stand with the budget. But we are proposing that we start on the 26th, which is the copy that you have now. And, and that's it, we just need a vote on that tonight.
So there will be no changes?
I mean, that, that would be the only change. You had a copy of another scenario from last year with the budget. But this, this, we're proposing to begin, which is when we normally begin on the 26th. And I feel as though we did our due diligence in letting the committee know how that impacts the budget.
And we did go over that in our budget subcommittee as well, and did the pros and cons with cost versus the other issues that were brought up, such as heat, which was my first concern about that. And the way the calendar is right now, revised, back to normal.
I did, Mr. Hood couldn't make it tonight. Did you do attendance, by the way? Yeah. So he couldn't make it tonight, but I did speak to him. And he, just to let the committee know, not that he's taking a formal vote tonight, but he would be in favor of the proposed calendar, just so you know.
Okay. Any questions? I did, but if we needed to take a roll call, we didn't take a roll call. Do we need a roll call to open files for the opening?
I thought we were supposed to, but it's not set up, but we can do it. Yeah, I just want the record to show that Mr. Hood is not here.
So retroactive roll call too. So a roll call, so.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Huckroft?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinera?
Yes.
Okay. So then, what I'd like to do is request a motion, please, to approve the 2024-25 school year calendar as proposed.
On a motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further questions or discussions on the calendar?
So just to be clear, staff reports on the 26th, which is that Monday, and students report on the 28th, which is that Wednesday, correct?
Correct.
And then the last day on the 13th, with no snow days of June, correct?
Piring no other emergencies.
And with the five snow days. Do we have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Mrs. Bailey?
Okay, I think this is my favorite thing on the agenda tonight. As you know, we try to feature, you know, each school, one of the schools each month with some of the things that we are working on. And this really focuses on our SEL curriculum. But we have what's called the FMS Espresso Express Cafe. We are students, and they're going to talk about it. I believe we have Jackson and Bryce with us tonight. But I'll call Kim Trahan and Casey Poole to the podium to make introductions. But they are going to talk to us about this Espresso Express that everybody loves. And they do such a fabulous job.
Hi, I'm Kim Trahan, one of the school adjustment counselors.
Hi, I'm Casey Poole, I'm the school counselor.
We also have another school adjustment counselor, Christina Tetro. She's not able to make it here tonight. So this was actually an idea that she had seen, that another district had done. And she brought it to us and said that we absolutely had to do this here at our school, and that our kids would love it. And she was right, it's been an amazing adventure for us to work with our students. And it's just, it's definitely been the most fun thing that we've done, so. So this is a project that does align with our district strategic initiatives. We have created a group environment that is safe and supportive, that developed the social and emotional learning of our students, especially as they face the challenges of transitioning from young adulthood, or young adolescents into young adulthood, and focusing on life skills and teamwork and things that we will talk about in a few minutes. We're also creating a climate for our staff and throwing the collective capacity of them as they are very supportive of all of our students. So we do thank all our staff that are here tonight with us who, you know, put in their orders. So I would like to, we do have two students with us, so I'd like them to introduce and talk a little bit.
Hello, it's an honor to be here tonight, I'm Jackson Drollay.
Hi, Jackson.
Jackson, we're so happy to have you here.
Yep, it's an honor. So the Espresso Express is this service that we do that once a month, we fill in orders that the teachers put in. And then, when we're done putting in the orders, we make them and then deliver them to the teachers. How the Espresso Express works is that we get, we get the orders when the teachers that want a drink for the month fill out a Google form, sitting what drink they want and toppings. You know, all that specific choices. And then we get the orders and then fill them in when it's time to do deliveries. Now I'm going to hand over the situation to my staffmate Bryce.
It's an honor being here tonight, thank you, as usual. And yes, I actually came up with the name.
It's true.
I don't mean to be jealous here. I'm trying to not get embarrassed on camera.
I know, we've all been there before.
And yes, I came, yes, I came up with the name. And I choose, I, it came, it popped out my mind one time, and I thought like, hey, why not name this, this thing Espresso Express? Instead of just naming it Coffee Card. And then how we fill the orders, we use cream, sugar, pump, and different flavors a month. So what, the, the most popular flavors we have are vanilla, caramel, peppermint. Some other flavors, we got hazelnut and pumpkin. And we also do hot tea, iced tea, and hot chocolate.
You're showing your sign?
This is a sign that we made? Yep. All of our other staffmates helped design it, but they couldn't make it tonight. Yeah, I'm in eighth grade.
I'm seventh.
So we have seventh and eighth graders, and then we also have a fifth and a sixth grade. So on, what days do you do it?
We do them on Thursdays.
Every day in the week.
Do you deliver outside of the school?
Unfortunately, no, but that is something that I would like to take into consideration.
I always thought of doing morning services.
Morning services would be nice. So Espresso Cafe. Now I'm going to hand over the situation to Mrs. Poole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome job, guys. So the four main goals that we have of the Espresso Express are life skills, communication skills, team building, and problem solving. So for life skills, so first and foremost, the beginning of the year, the students had to work on budgeting and ordering the needed supplies. So cups, coffee, creamer, all the different things. They had to kind of come up with what they would need for this project, and then work on coming up with the budget. And then every time they do it, they're fulfilling the orders together as a team. And at the end of the project, there's quite a bit of cleaning. So cleaning up the workstations. And then, all this, they do together. So deciding on the group name that you saw on their poster, that was a team effort. They, you know, taking all their ideas into consideration and coming up with their poster. Coming up with group norms, how we're going to run the group each time they meet. And then, you know, working on the advertisement together in addition to the Google form that goes out to teachers. And then we also have problem solving, so fixing inaccurate orders. There may have been one or two coffees that went out inaccurately, but thank you for those of you who did not say. Might have been a little extra pumpkin flavor in there. But they work on that, and sometimes on the spot. You know, if somebody said, oh, this, you know, I wanted the hot tea instead of this, so we try to have some extras on hand. Cleaning spills, especially as we go down the hallway, making sure we're safe. And scheduling. And so what that looks like is scheduling, making sure that we're getting, you know, we have lunch, and then for the seventh and eighth graders, we have X club where we can kind of dip a little bit into. So trying to make sure that we don't go over that, make sure that they get into class on time for the start of their academics. So that's kind of the scheduling, making sure, you know, which way in the hallway we're going to go. So we do half the building with seventh and eighth, and the other half with the fifth and sixth. So trying to come up with a fair schedule for all the teachers, so they all get their coffee. And then communication skills. So first and foremost, customer interaction. You know, how are you today, here's your coffee. Really trying to bolster those face-to-face interactions, especially, you know, and so much of it is on social media and online. So trying to boost that up. Reaching out for support, so if they are struggling to make a coffee and we are running low on time, reaching out to their crewmates to make sure that, you know, hey, I need a little bit of help making this order. And then new member orientation. Recently, we did have another member join our group. And so Jackson and Bryce were very nice to show them the ropes and get them caught up to speed on how we do. And they do a great job. And then, we have some pictures. So this is our fifth and sixth graders. So this is our work room, if you will. So we do have our big pot of coffee in the back of that Miss Shelley. The cup is gracious enough to brew for us. So it really is a team effort. So that was on delivery. And we have our seventh and eighth graders. And that's Mrs. Tetro in orange. That's my favorite picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done, excellent job.
Excellent. I'm so proud of you, Jackson and Bryce, and I appreciate you being here with us tonight. And I must say, big personalities in the group. And it's so nice when they come in and interact with the adults in the school. I know it's the best part of my week when they come in and, and talk to me. If I'm in a meeting, you know, I told them they can interrupt. So I really appreciate everything you're doing. We're going to miss you when you, when you do leave the middle school. But it's so nice to see that you're training the new students coming on for that group. So thank you again, and I appreciate the staff who are here tonight to support this, so thank you. Okay, so if there's no other questions on that, I'm going to keep moving along. Next up, we have the Student Opportunity Act. I'm going to call Ms. Righery up to the podium. This is something that is due to DESI. This isn't the first time that we've done this, it's been around for a few years. But we do receive money from the state, and we must admit this plan, and it must be voted on by the school committee prior to April. So Mr. Righery is going to go over how we landed on what we have and how parents were a part of, the stakeholders were a part of this. So with that, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. That is a tough act to follow. Such an interesting presentation I have tonight, but it is actually, oop, I've got two things going at once, sorry. It is actually an exciting opportunity. So in, in 2019, the Commonwealth started injecting more money into the Chapter 70 funds for schools in districts, especially schools that have students with, serving students with the greatest needs. And part of the law of the Student Opportunity Act is that it requires every district to set clear goals and objectives around moving, moving student groups who have typically been underserved and underperforming in, in district. So we're in the process of writing our second round. The, the first round kind of started in 2019, and peoples all over the state, the plans kind of got changed with the pandemic. And so now, this is the next round, the second round of the three-year planning. And hopefully, it goes a little more smoothly than the last time. But we had to kind of revise our plan during the last three years. And so now, we're hoping that this plan is one that will work for us no matter, no matter what. And so, we, what we use is data analysis. We looked at MCAS results from the 2023 MCAS, so last spring. And we, we looked at other data as well, but I think that this data is pretty representative of what, what we found across the board. And so what we have is a column that says all students, and it shows their ELA and math performance. So it's kind of an average of the student perform, students who are meeting and exceeding expectations in our schools by grade level on the ELA and math MCAS. And then, we have a column with students with disabilities and a column for low income. And what we can see here is that there's a lot of red under the column of students with disabilities. And that means, that, that's our group that has the greatest disparity from the average rate of all students. So they are underperforming the most of all subgroups compared to the all-student average. And then, second behind that is our low-income population. So the state asks us to set ambitious three-year targets for improving student achievement. And we'll be using the targets that DESI sets for us. They haven't released those targets at this point yet. So we're just taking a leap of faith and we're going to go with the DESI targets. That's where we want to be. And they, they are ambitious, but we always encourage all of our educators, and as we do as a district, to set lofty goals and really try to obtain those. So we did engage our stakeholder community in this process, which is a big part of this, is that we really want to have feedback from our community. So this did come up in meetings, and there was also a survey that was sent home. And those numbers don't seem like they add up. But people were able to select more than one option. They were, they were able to select up to three. So of the priority elements that we had sent home, these were DESI, the Department of Education's identified evidence-based strategies. So we had sent these out in the survey to, to our stakeholders, and they were able to select up to three, and they're kind of listed there in order of, where, where our stakeholders felt that they wanted us to focus our attention for the Student Opportunity Act. And I did try to make it clear in that survey and in conversations, it doesn't mean, you know, that we're not going to focus on anything other than the top three. A lot of these things we're already doing. But with, with regards to that money that's coming in from the Student Opportunity Act. And so our focus areas are going to be comprehensive approach to early literacy. And so this is really what we're looking at is, and we've been in the process of doing this, but to really continue to tighten it up. And so developing and implementing a comprehensive approach to early literacy education that is supported by high-quality literacy core curricular materials that encompass foundational skills. Now, we need to just kind of submit something. We're obviously, as a district, investing more money into a comprehensive approach to early literacy than what is listed here. But with regards to funding that may be coming in through the Student Opportunity Act, this is what we've identified, this is what we will be reporting on. But we're, we are also, through local, local funds and through other grants, Title I and whatnot, investing more into early literacy than what you're seeing here. So the cost of Lexia Core 5 over the course of three fiscal years is going to be fifty, about $58,000. The second focus area where our community really wanted us to, to focus on was early literacy screening and support. And again, we have been doing this four years. But we're, you know, we're regularly meeting. We actually had a training today on screening and our screening programming, and making sure that all members of the, all of those people who are doing the screening, whether it's a classroom teacher, or a special education teacher, or an interventionist, that we're all using the same software, that we're housing all of our data in the same place. Because, you know, we can do the screening, but then we also need to be able to have, the people who need to have access to that data have access to the data to make decisions. So again, we're fun, we're, we're investing more than what you see here. But for the purpose of the Student Opportunity Act, we are talking about Renaissance, which is Star Early Literacy and Star Reading. And the cost of that over three fiscal years, 25 to 27, is going to be about $77,000. And then the third was targeted support and acceleration. And that's implementing academic intervention opportunities, targeting student groups, demonstrating the largest gaps in achievement. So again, we, we are investing more than what you see here as a district, but for the purposes of Student Opportunity Act, we're talking about three interventionists and one reading specialist. Over the cost over three fiscal years is about $1.1 million. So our total SOA adjustment is one, about $1.2 million over the course of three fiscal years. And you should have the entire plan proposal in board docs. That's, you know, this will, this will need a vote tonight. That plan is what then would be submitted to the Department of Education. They will review and come back with any changes and recommendations. Or maybe they won't, and we'll be all set.
Okay, I think we do have some questions.
Okay.
For someone who's not a teacher and just a parent, what does this mean for students, like exactly, in a grand scale? This is very specific and, to me, very wordy and teacher-oriented and administration-oriented. What does it mean as a parent and as a taxpayer? What am I doing?
Well, what we want to do is, what we don't want to have is be looking at these kinds of numbers, right? Where there's student groups who are just falling behind. So what we want to do is make sure that we're providing equitable access in order for students to grow.
Are we not, though? Are we, are we separating these kids right now and not giving them the attention that they need?
We are giving, we are, we're giving them the attention that they need. But I think we can always try to work harder to look at our data and say, what are we doing, what could, what should we be doing differently? And kind of do, doing a deep dive. So that is what we are in the process of doing as a leadership team and with our school instructional leadership teams. And then that's also kind of getting pushed down into general meetings, like curriculum support time meetings, where we're really digging deeper into the data. And we're looking at, why is this group of students not moving? As much as we would like to see them moving. And so that's what we're really trying to dig, dig deep into. As far as intervention services go, we want to make sure that, what are, what are the total needs of services that a student may need, right? And then, are, almost like prescribing that and making sure that we're giving each student what they need. And that's kind of what we, what we really need to get better at, is probably getting all parties in the room, special educators, interventionists, administrators, teachers, and saying, let's look at this whole picture, and what do we need to do? And how are we going to do it? Who should be doing it?
So we're not taking away from the other groups and giving more attention to these groups? We're just adding to this? Is that correct?
Right. Yes, and, and this would be true, you know, when we talk about equitable services, we need to look at all students. need to look at all students, right? All students and saying, what do they need? And so it's not necessarily that we're only focusing on one group. We just want to make sure that we're focusing on all groups and that all students are getting exactly what they need.
And with the amount of staff that we have, in your opinion, you feel that the other groups that are not associated with this will still get what they need, and we're just giving extra money and attention to these children? We have enough staff whenever we need to do that.
Well, we're going to really, I mean, that is a good question, and I don't know if I have that answer right now. I mean, I think that's something that as a team, we have to maybe start thinking about, should we be doing things the same way we've always been doing them? Or can we think creatively? Can we, are there different models? Are there different ways to arrange things? So are there ways that we haven't even thought about? And so we need to just really start recalling this a problem of practice and really digging deep and looking at other models and seeing. So what that's going to look like in the future, I think it's something that I could not plan on my own, but that as a, we have great minds, and when we all come together and really look at that problem and really identify where we can improve and then, you know, make the plans from there. So that is going to be a huge part of this.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not just, it's really, I mean, there's so much more that you probably saw on the proposals.
I did, that's why I'm very confused about this.
Tonight. Yeah, there's a lot more to it, which really is going to include a lot of thinking and planning and rearranging.
And that's what just made me think of like, all right, are we going to take away now from the other big groups because of all of the 16 pages?
Every district has to focus on a group with the greatest disparity. So for example, we don't have enough English learners to report a subgroup, right? So we're focused on students with disabilities. Another district might be focused on the English learners that have a greater disparity in their MCAS scores. So it's got to be a subgroup that isn't performing, you know, up to what the majority is performing. So these are our numbers, this is our data. I do think that the plan can be flexible. It seemed like it was like that in the past, so like, as we look at our data each year, we need to make some tweaks and changes, we do. And I know that Mr. McGarry's been working very closely with the staff on looking at different ways to do this, looking at our research-based models, curriculum, so that we can possibly look at. We don't want to continue doing the same exact thing if it's not working, so what can we do differently with that particular group? It doesn't mean that there's any less focus on the other groups.
Okay.
I mean, generally, best practice in what's going to work well for students with disabilities or low-income students is going to work well for everybody.
Very good. Thank you for answering my question.
Any other questions?
Oh, just a comment. Really appreciate this presentation. I think it's, you know, this is the way, you know, it should go. When I was in state government, we had a slogan, "You may be doing things, you know, you may be doing the right things, but are, you know, are you getting the whole picture and doing the right things?" And I think this is, you know, a step in like in that direction, maximizing your resources and defining them and pinpointing where they really have to be, your resources have to be allocated. So I really think this is, you know, I think we're going to, you know, when we face budget challenges and we're probably going to have, you know, redefine things that you're doing and we're doing, and I think this is a great step forward.
Absolutely. I think that's what makes our work so complex, because I think schools do this all over the place. We're constantly looking at data. If everybody had the answer, every student in every district would be at 100%, right? So it's very complex work, but the great thing is, we have a great team here at Akushinet that has been very willing to collaborate with each other to do this kind of work.
Just quickly, Angela, the four that are going to come from this, the three interventionists and one reading specialist, as a teacher, I get really excited about that because I know that's so much help. Like after that fiscal year, those two fiscal years, do those positions just go away? Or do we get them again? Because that's a huge help in closing the gap.
Those positions we do currently have, we have had those positions.
You're not adding three more?
We're not adding more. I don't, we don't, we don't necessarily see the need to add that additional staff at this time. But what we are looking at is the utilization of those people in addition to all the other resources that we have, you know, in working with those professionals and saying, how do we restructure? And again, I guess that kind of goes back to the question of, are you able to meet the needs of everybody with what we already have? And so I guess there will be more to come. I would hope so. I would like to.
I'd like to get three more interventionists. I was really happy.
No, the budget doesn't support that.
So this cost is coming. I was like, wow.
But we have to report to DESI how we're utilizing, how that fund is being utilized that we get from Chapter 70. So, you know, Mr. McGarry broke it down to each of the focus areas on how the funding is getting allocated to address this need.
So this is in our budget, right? For 2024 or 25?
Yes.
And no new positions? We have these positions already.
Correct.
I can't get blood from my stool.
All right.
This step goes a great, it's a step forward in the sense, because at budget time, the questions are always asked, what are we getting for our money? And I think, you know, this type of programs and approach is basically telling folks and informing folks that this is what you're getting for your money, and this is how, then the needs are there and how, you know, how all, you know, the students and our community will benefit by this approach. It's maximizing your, you know, our resources.
Absolutely.
So I think that...
And our stakeholders had to say, they, you know, people's voices matter, so we try to be very thoughtful about the types of surveys that we are sending out to families. But these surveys are important because your voices matter to us, and this really helped us shape our plan and what we're doing with students. And, you know, who's more important than the parents out there? They know the kids, they know what they want, so.
Remember that quote, "You may be doing things right, but are you doing the right thing?" And this is exactly what...
That's right.
And I just put the family engagement questions back up there, just so you're, you know, just so you have in your mind maybe a little bit of, there are other things that people do feel are important. We took the top three to focus on, but you'll see that there was, there is a bit of an interest in expanded access to pre-K, full day for fours.
And this is out of the people who responded?
Yes.
You know, we know that people feel a certain way if they don't have time to respond, but we were happy with the responses that we did get, so.
And we did get a decent amount of feedback from families who have students with disabilities taking part in the survey. So that was great, because that was really our focus, our area of focus, so.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I request a motion, please, to accept the draft Student Opportunity Act as presented?
I was so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, no further discussion or questions. All right, allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGarry. And the last thing I have is just, I sent out an email to you regarding a joint school committee meeting with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and that's scheduled for 7:00 p.m. March 20th at Ford Middle School, right here in the library. So I did put a calendar invite out to you if you just want to accept that, but that is scheduled, and we'll be posting for that. And that's going to be all around the budget.
Right. All right.
And that's all I have.
We'll move into the Business Managers Report. Patrick McIntyre, if you'd like to... Come on up. I know, you thought you were running out.
Mr. President Downing, School Committee. I couldn't believe I looked at last month's agenda. It was a month ago that we presented the Superintendent's preliminary budget, but here we are a month later, and we've been meeting regularly to work on the budget and improve the budget and maximize the funding for the budget. But before I jump into that, Fiscal 24, you have the Budget Detail Report attached in Board Docs. Again, you know, I hate to keep sounding redundant, but everything's going as planned for 24. There was a higher focus in the last month or so on high school tuitions and out-of-district costs, where we really dialed in our fixed costs related to those students, and we encumbered them for the rest of the year to really see the true impact on our budget, to see where we're going to land. So you'll see some updates in those columns there, but otherwise, with minimal movement between budget categories, we're on track, and we've switched focus to see if there's going to be any savings towards the end of the year, specifically around payroll and vacancies. So that's one of our focuses amongst everything else going on. Fiscal 25 budget, as Superintendent Bailey just spoke on, there will be a joint meeting with the School Committee, Finance Committee, and Board of Selectmen on March 20th here at Albert Ford Middle School Library, 7:00 p.m. We're hoping for some productive conversation around the budget and share our views on what our needs are and why we need them for our staff and our students, and why they're crucial to our teaching and learning. So, you know, we invite everybody to attend that wants to learn a little bit more about the budget and, you know, from here until town meeting, which is also scheduled now for June 3rd, I believe that's the first Monday in June, we'll be breaking down the budget with a public hearing. You know, the School Committee still has to adopt the final budget, and we're going to try to meet with the ATA, the PTO, whoever really wants to entertain a budget, you know, snapshot presentation from myself and Dr. Bailey to better understand, you know, where we're allocating resources. Any questions, you know, on that process right now? Okay. Facilities, so one of the biggest undertakings right now that we've been focused on is our Energy Management Services Request for Qualifications. This all stems from the identified need of, you know, improved air quality in AES as well as the maintenance and maintaining our buildings and equipment. So that procurement, if you will, is coming to a close on Friday. All submissions will be due. From there, we will evaluate all the submissions, and we will pick a company that, you know, fits our agenda, if you will. From there, they'll go into an investment-grade audit where they'll look at both schools', building envelope, equipment, anything energy-related, and they will pretty much price out, hey, this is what you need to do to get up to par with your systems, your facilities, your buildings, and how do you want to phase it? You know, you want to pay for everything at once? Do you want to, you know, piecemeal it? Do you want to do nothing right now until there's, you know, a bigger, a better picture with the fiscal representation of the town and what they can afford? So we're looking forward to that report, but we're also looking forward to making some changes and upgrades, so stay tuned on that. A little note there, you know, admittedly, not many schools go through this process, and if they do, it's once every 20 years. This is, this is good for 20 years. So we have contracted or about to contract an owner's agent to sort of oversee the process. I've had many phone calls with this individual already and just brainstorming. They already suggested, you know, a handful of ideas that save us six, upwards of six figures that, you know, I would have never even thought of. And you start getting into tax credits and, you know, taxable debt and things like this and all the different incentives, and, you know, this is their wheelhouse and the small price to pay to have someone representative of that involved in the process to save us a larger fortune in the future is well worth it. So this is not by any means on me or central office or Superintendent Bailey. We do very much have experts involved. Continuing with facilities, unfortunately, you know, we're falling behind with the cleanliness of the schools again. We're doing our best, but we're short-staffed and we cannot find willing and able candidates. And when we do, you know, we vet them through the HR process and make sure that they're fit, if they are fit. So the good news is, we've had conversations with the custodial unit and union representatives to hire temp workers to fill these vacancies, to get our schools back up to snuff. We had those meetings not too long ago that now we're actively pursuing solicitations of quotes for these temp positions and hopefully can implement that soon for the rest of the year. And publicly, you know, I just want to make it clear, we are not trying to replace anybody's jobs. We're trying to keep these buildings up to par and expectations of cleanliness and, you know, conditions to teach and learn. That's what it comes down to.
You only prepared for the coming storm of, we're going to get about four inches of rain?
So, yeah, so that's my next note. You know, unfortunately, as we continue through this wet season, you know, we continue to notice leaks here and there throughout the schools, whether they're small leaks or they're, you know, it's water trickling down a pipe through the ceiling, whatever it is, we're doing everything that we can to address it. They exist, they exist in any building that's 60-plus years old, and we, you know, we have one facilities director and one maintenance worker, but, you know, some of the custodians are helping out, you know, our maintenance workers are helping out, everyone's helping hands. But there are issues that still exist, and, you know, there's rules in addressing these things where if it hits a certain expense, it has to be precarious. If it's a certain type of construction, it has to be prevailing wage and be precarious. So some of these things take time, but they're not being ignored, and they are a concern, and we're working to address these concerns, and this energy audit will help address, again, the building envelope and some of these issues that may come up or continue to come up. Any questions specific to that? I know that sounds alarming, but again, these are old buildings and leaks are going to happen, and we're going to do our best to address them as they come.
Have any students have to been displaced or teachers displaced because of this?
No, it hasn't been that severe. I think the biggest issue right now we are seeing is in one of the closets in the gymnasium where there's some, you know, supplies stored. So we have a plan in place to kind of move things around and mitigate the situation while we can to get permanent fix.
Okay.
Food services, you know, same chart that I provide every month. I think it's just helpful to see that participation year over year continues to trend upwards. You know, we're doing the best we can, and universal free lunch has been implemented for the last year and a half now that we are seeing upticks in participation. And with that, you know, we had school committee concerns in the past of what meals are we providing, what's the health benefit of these meals? Well, to that note, you know, supply chain assistance came out where Akushinet received almost $28,000 in supply chain, supply chain assistant funds, and that, those funds need to be specifically used on unprocessed or minimally processed domestic food products. So it just touches to the point, Larry.
Organic chicken patties?
Unprocessed or minimally processed.
One of these days.
That's not to say that, you know, organic chicken patties are not in that bill, but we'll take a look at that. But again, you know, steering the ship in the right direction there, doing the best we can, and we have made improvements, and we plan on having a presentation at the end of the school year similar to last year of the goals we set, the goals we met, and kind of where we need to continue to improve moving forward. And then, you know, one of the exciting things that I missed out on this year that was one of my first experiences, you know, integrated with the staff and the cafeteria unit last year was hot cocoa day. It was a big hit this year on February 12th. I know Superintendent Bailey helped serve some hot cocoa along with the principals and obviously the cafeteria staff, and there's some pictures out there floating around of that, but the feedback was great, the students loved it, you know, it was nice to hear about the smiles on everyone's face, so that's always exciting to have a positive, you know, spin on some things, too. And then more positives, transportation bid closed out last Friday. One bidder, so open competition allowed us for one bid submission, which, you know, that's all well and good. We're familiar with the company, Emerald Bus Company, same company.
There was two, though, right?
There were three that attended our pre-bid conference, but one bid came in by the deadline. But the good news is, you know, meet me halfway here, 13% increase between this year and next year. You know, when we had the preliminary discussions about a 30% to 40% increase, I was, I don't know if something was missed on year-to-year or now until the end of the next contract, but if you put the contract years together, between now and the end of the next contract, we're looking at a 36% increase. So I don't know what was missed, but now we can afford some savings to our budget for next year's transportation, but let's not ignore the fact that a 13% increase is still pretty high, all considering. So it's good to have those figures in. That... That contract came with two option years, an option year four and an option year five. To be able to enter into a five-year contract or a contract beyond three years, we have to go to town meeting for approval. And just at the rate that everything's going, their contract years came in flat. So no increases for year four and year five. Between years three and four and four and five, there's zero increases. So it'll be very advantageous for us to enter into a five-year and, you know, reap the benefits of those final two years, given the...
Are we discussing this in executive session?
We will discuss it in budget subcommittee.
Okay.
But that's, that's my two cents on it anyway. And again, they're option years, so even if it does get voted on to enter into contract, we always have the option after the third year. And that's about it. Oh, shout out to Nick Monticello. He, his last day is Friday. He's our town accountant. It's bittersweet for me. I've worked with him obviously since I've gotten here. He was the assistant town accountant, promoted to the town accountant more recently. Hard worker, great rapport, you know, plethora of knowledge on the town side. He will be missed. It will be challenging. We hope that they fill his role rather quickly so that we don't miss a beat between, you know, the accounting system and the budget process and the end of year reports. And the list goes on and on and on and on. But I wanted to wish him best of luck on his next endeavor, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Do you have any reports this evening? May I have our school committee?
Fine. Okay. Did I just make a couple of comments?
Yes.
We know that you're very depressed that a commissioner of education is leaving, Jeff Riley. He came here, you know, to speak in the presentation for the awards. Surmising what the challenges that he faced, which we will be facing someday, you know, in the future, is number one, that there's legislation being discussed about mandating certain parts of the curriculum, rather than leaving it up to a local option of, you know, school committees, some of it. And it seems that the model that he, which is most effective, which I understand that we use, is that, you know, which shows the greatest gain, is the one that the, that I think is being recommended to be part of legislation and be mandated for school committees and a school of promise to follow. But there's a great deal of pushback, there's a great deal of, you know, especially from some school departments near Boston area where they want to favor more, more of a local and teacher-based type of curriculum. But it does lack, you know, I won't get into, you know, the details, but it does lack alignment. It does lack, you know, wildly, the proposed one, you know, has a degree of more phonics and more, and more, and, and helps meet many of the demands of the, you know, test results. So that, that's number one, a big challenge. The second, the second one is what may be placed on the ballot, which the teachers, you know, the Mass Teachers Association is, they want to remove some of the requirements of MCAS, you know, for, for graduation. And that in turn will reduce some of the accountability and, you know, in the, in the system. It could, you know, and I... When we had, when the Educational Reform Act was passed and pushed, it was basically the business community that pushed to have the accountability piece, you know, which required a MCAS and what a high school diploma meant. Because, because what they felt was good for the economy was basically a, a, a high school diploma that had, had, had something to it. It had, it brought skills to the workforce and it would, you know, it would boost the economy. So they're concerned about, take away the accountability piece, that the value of a high school diploma will diminish. But there's a great, you know, so there's a great, a great deal of, you know, so it will change even sometimes if, if that, you know, that was on the ballot and passes, that some of our, even our performance-based valuations would have to be diminished. So it, it has a lot of, you know, comp, you know, ramifications to it. But I want to just bring it out that that's what the discussion is. And it seems to me, you know, the loss of Jeff Riley, I don't know if he just saw some, some war clouds coming that, that, you know, and it basically said, you know, you know, I, I, you know, just do something else. So, but I, so, so anyway, I just want to pass that on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, yes, please. So just, just two, two important dates that Patrick McIntyre, our business manager, had mentioned. And just for the community out there, for parents and teachers, the ATA, it would be very important for them to show up at our March 20th meeting at 7 o'clock to support our school budget. Again, parents, teachers, the community that wants to support the school district, you know, please try to make every effort to attend that March 20th at 7:00 PM at, right here, right in Ford Middle School? Right here, as well as the June 30th town meeting. I mean, June 3rd, I'm sorry. June 3rd at 7 o'clock. Please be there. Please try to make every effort for the parents that kids play baseball and softball, you know, have one parent bring the child to practice or the game and the other parent come to vote. It's just very important that we support our school district because we are trying to do what's best for the town as well as the students moving forward. So just want to bring that to everyone's attention again.
Thank you for those reminders. All right. We have some communications listed. You can read at your own time. We are going to move into executive session this evening. So if I could have a motion, please, to adjourn so we can move into...
We just have to state the reason for executive session.
Oh, sorry about that. It's okay. We are moving into executive session to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto, safety and security of staff and students. If I could have a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Second? All right. And we'll take a real call vote.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Donahue?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next meeting. You live on...
Yes.
Listened, right? I did. Yes.
I'm watching. You know, I saw you pulling up the...
I had no idea. I got it.
I got it. Yep. We are meeting again for our next regular school committee meeting on Tuesday, April 9th at 5:30, same location right here at the Ford Middle School Library. Thank you.